Bachman.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman.
Here.
And Stevens.
I move to excuse Mayor Stevens.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Bane, would you grace us with your presence, please?
I sure will. I sure will. Well, we're back here again this year to talk about Meadow Brook. We will start with golf operations, move to banquet, and then we'll just kind of go over some upcoming projects that we foresee in the future at Meadow Brook. I don't think so. It worked the other day. Oh, there we go. Yep. Had to just pop out a battery and pop it back in. Okay, so just to present you with just a few numbers this evening. As far as the golf operations go, you can see with the number of golfers, paid greens fees and cart rentals. You can see that we do have an upward trend. The black bar is this year, and I've chosen to show numbers through 2020. The paid greens fees are those that don't necessarily include any promotions like Buy Golf for Half or Pass holders. So these are just people who are walking in, paying. Cart rental, you can see that increase. Did want to mention in 2021, in 2022, we did have a bit of a dip because we ran into issues with our cart fuses. But figured a way around that to get us through until our new cart lease, which was this year, which we will talk about. Also wanted to provide you with the numbers for what number of passes that we've sold. I've done October 1st through September 30th just because usually at the end of the year, if somebody purchases a pass, then it's for that following year, not for the current year. So you can see where we've stayed about the same with the total number of passes, but our resident pass, which we did implement in 2022, or excuse me, 2021, which enabled residents to get a discounted rate. We just had them register for a free pass. That has, those numbers have gone up, and we have seen the number of residents' greens fees paid increase as well. Okay. Do you mind just going to the next slide for me, please? Will you go to the next slide manually for me, please? Any questions on this slide while we're on it? We're going to have a little bit. And just to note, the junior pass does, that's mostly our Northmont Golf team members who purchase those passes. We do have some outside of it, but the majority are the students.
I have a question on the first page of your golf operations. It says up top, that picture is quite a picture.
It is. It's a nice pic. It's a nice pic. No, a drone took that one. A drone? I don't, um, yeah.
Were you guiding the drone?
I was not. I was not. Yeah, we have some nice pictures from that drone, but it is. I, I did. I agree.
Well, it's changing here, but it's not changing up there.
Okay. Should I just continue since, or should I wait since everybody has their? Okay.
I don't know if you have anywhere within your slide presentation. Is it?
Okay. Wait, are you sure? Remember? Okay, okay. Some other numbers just wanted to give you before we get into financials. The outings that we've had with the number of outings has increased dramatically since we no longer have an onsite cater. It really does allow different organizations, scholarship funds, things like that, who do hold the outings to bring in their own caterers to be able to save money. And those have dramatically increased. I don't see us, I see us kind of leveling off in the next few years with this because this was about what we could handle as a facility. Simulators is the next graph there. In 2021, there were no fall or winter leagues because COVID pretty much shut everything down during that timeframe. In 2020, there were no fall leagues. That is where we do see a lot of simulator usage. So we do look to see, to climb that up. Here we get into our financials. We can see the trend upward in greens fees, carts, and passes. Excuse me, greens fees and carts. You can see the revenue there as we have increased quite a bit this year. And again, I do believe that is helpful because of our carts. First of all, we've had enough carts to give people. Where in 2021, we did run into, or excuse me, 2022, we did run into some issues. And it's, let's see here, driving range for the miscellaneous items, just so you know kind of what's included in there. It's the driving range, merchandise, t-shirts and things we sell in the clubhouse, gift cards, sales tax, those types of items. Any questions on the revenues?
Does miscellaneous include the restaurant upstairs?
It does not. That actually goes into, I will have a, thank you. I will have a separate slide for snack bar and, or snack bar and concessions. So we will talk about that.
On the passes, I notice it's a little lower than the other years. Is there a reason for that?
We, I think that it's just more people have been paying. They tend to go to different courses, so they, it's not just one home course necessarily. I would be more concerned if I saw greens fees start dropping as well. But since we're getting the daily greens fees, you know, that the passes are lowering a little bit, I'm not quite as concerned, but we do see that downward trend a bit.
We have an increase, we did have an increase on passes, though, correct?
We, not, not last year, but the year before, I believe.
Do, is the cart lease payment, is that paid for? Do you know entirely with what it's bringing in, or is it still?
I would have to look at that one to see what exactly. That's an excellent question, but I can definitely, my thought is yes. Because you'll see with our, we are bringing with our golf financials, let me skip ahead real quick. We are sitting right now at a 96% recovery rate. So we're in the golf section, we are recovering, as of September 30th, 96% of our costs. So my assumption would be yes for the carts, but how much? I can certainly get you that information.
It's amazing that, I mean, it's amazing that you said having the carts that work with the, versus the ones last year with the fuse boxes that had issues makes that much of a difference with people sticking to play because they don't want to walk.
Well, we also have, I mean, again, the, since the greens fees went up with the number of people playing, too, also increases the carts. We just, you know, I mean, even if it was difficult because we had to shut down online tee time bookings when we knew we wouldn't have enough carts because you don't book carts online. So we basically had to shut that down so people wouldn't come in and be disappointed that they don't have a cart. So then there wasn't the ability. Okay, so we do pay and then? Yeah, so Barb, excellent. She's so organized. We pay about $60,000 in our cart lease. So we are making. Any other questions on the revenues?
Do we have on the cart lease?
So we actually, we, excellent segue. The cart lease is, was actually up in, let's see, August 15th of this year. Unfortunately, due to supply chain issues, we do not have our new carts yet. We do have carts that, the good thing is that we had to get them a little bit earlier than what we thought we were going to get them. But right now, we're not paying on the lease because until we get our new carts, we don't have to pay. So right now, we're just sitting tight.
And we have gas carts as a stopgap.
Correct. Yes, we have gas, yeah, we have, the majority are gas and we have about 10 electric right now. So, which seem to be, again, doing well, keeping up. But we are very excited to implement our new carts because they will have that GPS system in it, which not only helps the golfer on the course know where to go, but we can limit where the carts go so they're not necessarily destroying the course or, yeah, going up on greens and things like that, which is really helpful and, you know, to maintain costs with that. Are they louder? Oh, well, our, our new ones, yeah, our, our new ones are not going to, or the ones that we're leasing, when they come in, they're going to be electric. Like our current ones. No, the ones we have currently are gas, you know, that were in that kind of between lease points. Then pump station and controls. The contractor has all, this was approved by you all for this year's work and we have, the contractor has all the parts, but we need to shut down the system in order to drain it. But we don't want to do that until we know that we're out of season and don't need to turn on the irrigation system any longer. So we're hoping to begin this project, to have it installed the second week of November. We have three wells that are not functioning when we have droughts. Unfortunately, not this year, but last year, we had to actually buy water. So to not have to do that and to be more cost effective, we are going to fix those wells and put new pumps in each of those wells. We're using, we're doing one to two pumps or wells this year and the rest next year. The good news that we found out, though, is that with that pump station and controls, we can actually tie the well pumps into those controls. So we don't have to, it's just going to be a matter of having an electrician hook them up. We're not having to purchase new controls, which is a huge cost-saving measure. We still have some creek work to do this fall and winter, basically to help with some of the washing out of the creeks. We upgraded the course restrooms with new sinks, paper dispensers, paint, plexiglass windows, things like that. We had gotten some complaints about the restroom, so this has really helped with that. And it was all done in-house, which was nice. Of course, staffing, we still continue, you know, trying to find staff members at a, and keep wages at a good rate. But that is always going to be an ongoing issue for, unfortunately, it's with any industry right now. And like everything, costs of course maintenance, you know, is increasing with chemicals and things like that. But we are trying to do what we can to keep costs down.
I haven't heard anything but good vibes about the courses in great shape.
The course has been in great shape. Mark and his guys have just rocked it this year. I mean, honestly, it has, we've had one of the best years, and you can totally see that with the greens fees, seeing how many greens fees we have there.
One thing I have heard a couple complaints about is, oops, from the people who live across Route 49. And this time of year, it's not so bad, but when the leaves fall off the trees, there's kind of a dump right there across the, across 49 from, there's like three houses there that, and there's the.
Those big drills, whatever, that's there also. But the two houses next to that are the ones that I've had complaints. And like I said, it's been in October, November, December, January, not June, July, August. When the leaves are up and it's green, it's not a problem.
Just the look of it is what they're, okay, okay.
And I've driven by it a few times after I've heard from them, and it is a mess.
Yeah, we do, are using that area for some storage things. We are, we do have some projects going on, so some of that material hopefully will be cleared out here this winter, so. Any other questions with that? Golf financials, of course, weather plays a huge part in Ohio with golf operations. We had a fabulous summer this year, kind of, you know, we saw a little bit of dip in September, but January through March, which is, was wonderful this year. We actually were able to get people out to play. So we really did see that's contributed to the overall numbers was that people were able to get out January through March.
Golf, and the golf financials, does that include the simulator or is that just the outdoor course?
So with the, oh, you mean with the 96 or with the recovery rate? That includes the simulator.
And then the cost of the simulator as well?
Correct. Yes, anything associated with, as well as the concessions, as well as anything that's included in the golf operations. So we are, of course, you know, getting into our slower season with it getting cooled out. So, you know, again, we do see that recovery rate will adjust, but hopefully, we plan on getting our simulator leagues up and running at the end of this month, so.
Tell, advertising that?
The simulators? Mostly through social media. We do have a, we're running out our contract with Buy Golf for Half, who does some advertising for us. We used to advertise in the, I forget what it's called, but the Dollar Saver, Money Saver, but that has since combined with another area and really didn't seem well worth our while. We also do advertise with, we do pay and upgrade with Yelp, which we have seen some good return on. That when somebody puts in golf course or golf simulator, we pay to have ours come up first, so, if they're searching for a certain area. Any other questions about golf before we go to concessions and snack bar?
I guess I do have one question about golf.
Sure.
So we did really well this year, and do you think we've hit our, our limit? Or are we going to have, able to grow that?
I think we still have room to grow. There were still open tee times, so there's, you know, to find ways to, that's one thing I would like to do this winter is kind of find trends where we're finding lower use so we can either market that or provide discounted rates or, you know, there are different opportunities to be able to fill those spots. We also, with this new golf cart lease, we're going to get five more carts. So that will allow us to fill additional times as well. So we'll have 55 instead of five, or 55 instead of 50, five additional ones.
There might be some press opportunities, like I've seen, you know, some covered probably in the Dayton Daily, you know, like one local course, them just putting a whole lot of money into their practice area. You know, that got a lot, that was on the local media. So it might be an opportunity for us to see if just that advertisement of new carts and increasing carts and, you know, oh, hey, by the way, we're public.
Yes, yes.
That could, you know, we could definitely utilize that opportunity. Because on that stand, I can tell you, you know, when, with my reunion that happened, even some people who were local, who hadn't played there, some still and don't live right in the immediate area, but still live in the Dayton area, still were like, wait, this isn't a country club anymore? You know, so, and obviously, it's improving on that front, but I think just any of those opportunities to go, hey, this is public, you know, this, this course, the facility is public.
Yes.
Are you going to also renew your golf for half or whatever you just called it for next year?
No, we will not be doing that.
So that was a marketing tool?
Yes.
And it wasn't, you didn't see a good return on?
No.
Okay.
I just, I, it, I feel that there's better avenues to put money because the way Golf for Half worked, we traded tee times for advertising. So it wasn't necessarily us paying. And there was a lot of tee time sold, and it's taken us about six years to, yeah, to, to pay all those off. Or to, you know, I mean, those certificates to run out.
Okay, wow.
This kind of gets back to my, what I was trying to get to it originally.
Yeah.
Dennis kind of mentioned the fact, are we approaching our, our max point of operation? And you said not, there was still room of trying to be proactive from the standpoint of where we had been before. Things kind of getting stymied because not really being able to have personnel focus on what was going on, and then COVID, of course. Competition for youth or persons going to golf courses, I mean, we're kind of a unique spot, per se, from the standpoint, there really was no direct competition. You know, with, I guess there was some rumors circulating about the course up on Westbrook Road, yeah, Moss Creek, potentially.
Now opening, is, or is now open?
That type of, another golf course up the road, opening up, potentially offering competition for golfers going somewhere else for a golf experience. You know, the impact that might have, per se, moving forward into next year as far as retaining those rounds of golf being played or attracting new people to come in in order to ensure revenue stream. You know, and plus, you know, you're talking about the, the advertisement as far as new ideas, as far as working on new ideas for how to promote the course, its operations so that it's more, more visible from the standpoint of what people's, you know, are looking for. You're talking about, you know, Yelp and other things as far as reaching out. I'm not telling anybody what to do, I'm just like, you know, I, it was other things, but other things within the city as far as being proactive, as far as reaching out and looking for new ways of doing things, looking for a greater rate of return. So it was the question and comment, so.
Moss Creek was open.
Yep, Gray Wolf now.
How many holes, I don't know how many holes Moss Creek is.
Nine, nine holes, because they were working on the other portion of it.
I didn't play it, but actually, I believe they were 18, they were full 18 because actually, I tried to book, you know, just had, just see it myself. I tried to book nine, and it won't let me book 18. I'm just, I'm just saying that perspective, but I could be wrong.
I went over to a golf outing, and they only had nine at that particular time because they were building a clubhouse, and that wasn't completed. But I believe now that is completed.
They, they do, they do. Yes, my son was on the golf team and they split time, and they did some practices over there, and they were, it was there.
Yeah, it's whole new ownership over there who's investing quite a bit into it, from, from my understanding. You know, yes, it's competition. But, you know, at the same time, you know, we have a old country club course from the 20s. So, you know, that's, that's our gem, you know, that we can, that we can promote as well. I think, I think there's room, you know, you look outside of those two in northwest Montgomery County, what else is there? I mean, the closest, other closest one is, is, yeah, that's even a little further, you know.
Asshole.
Yeah, over Man Delia, so, you know, we've kind of got, you know, not a full monopoly, but there's, there's not a whole lot of opportunities here.
Since some of the Dayton courses closed.
Correct, yeah, Kitty Hawk closing.
Yeah, it did help some. What? It's catering, right.
If you look at the course itself, if you compare notes to both courses, there is no comparison with our course and the, the way the greens are and just the aesthetic of the whole course. There's no comparison.
And then just it triggered that we, Meadow Brook, we're actually looking to do, it'll be a great marketing opportunity. Meadow Brook's going to have been open 100 years next year. So, which is just, again, a great opportunity and not a lot of, I don't know, any courses around here that can say that, so. So we will be looking at that, too. Any other questions, comments on golf? Okay, so. So there is.
We can say we're. We're the oldest public course.
I don't know either, so. I'm not, yeah.
No, the, the course is completely in the city of Trotwood. It is split between the Trotwood School District and Northmont School District, so maybe that's what they're talking about, but it's completely in.
But we are allowed to drink beer in Clayton, correct?
Are allowed to drink beer in Clayton.
And speaking of which, a good place would be Meadow Brook to do that, yes.
I think that's a great segue, Elaine, if you want to talk about alcohol sales and concession stands.
All right. Okay, so concessions and snack bar. So both of these are to support golf operations. Although the snack bar used to be a restaurant, full-service restaurant, now it's just a snack bar where we do offer some hot foods, like hot dogs, sausages. We added pizzas and pretzels this year. So this was, it was opened in 20, April 1st of 2022 was when we started these operations again. The concessions, we consider what's part, what's in the pro shop. So that's what we sell from the pro shop, which we do keep separate from the snack bar. So you can see in the chart that we have increased sales this year. I think because, again, we've had more golfers, of course, as well as we now have, people know that we're open. We have consistent hours, so that does really help. And although it's a bit difficult to determine exact net revenue from food and drink sales, we take in about 12,000 net revenue from concession and about 7,800 from snack bar. Snack bar is less because we do staff that the entire time. Concessions, of course, is just run by the pro shop attendants. We are still working on selecting the best vendors. In 2021, we utilized Rich Taste Catering for salads and sandwiches, which was fabulous. But unfortunately, they stopped their wholesale operations, so we had to regroup. Used Gem City, found that okay, but then we found we could do, keep costs down even more by making our own sandwiches, so in-house. So that is what we are currently doing. We've also looked at quite a few different vendors, trying to find, who knew hot dogs were so different from different vendors? But we definitely hear it from the customers, and so we are finding the best ones so we can sell those. Concessions, you can definitely see that they are higher with the alcohol because in, for 2023, because winter leagues for the simulator, we had a bar down there. for 2023, because winter leagues for the simulator, we had a bar down there, so those did increase quite a bit. Usually, our snack bar operations this year, they were from April fourteenth to October fifteenth, although we do see some nice days outside of that, it just, we try to find the most cost-effective timeframe. I do have to say, the alcohol license has been a fruitful endeavor for Meadow Brook, so when you write, as of now, this is with our banquet operations, our snack bar operations and our concession, after you take out the cost, we're looking about 78,000 in revenue just from alcohol. Any questions about concessions and snack bar? So we'll get on to banquet and event facility operations. It is not, it is not, no, this very beautiful bride. So you can see just number of paid rentals. Of course, we had COVID in there with 2020 and 2021, which there was a lot of, people weren't having events, weren't having, getting together, so of course, that was down, but I looked, and we are definitely increased over from when we had an in-house caterer. We had about fifty events, paid events each year with our caterer, and just this year, we're sitting at eighty-six, and it's, it's October, or well, this is from September thirtieth. So we are seeing more rentals, different types of rentals. We also now are tracking community and discount events, so, so far this year, we've had fifty-seven. This includes Clayton events like the movie in January, the senior lunches, dance parties, the rotary meetings, police and fire trainings and meetings, Northmont Chamber events, and Northmont City School events and trainings. We, we've also had the county use us a few times for events, and we are a polling location, so. And just to show you some financials here, you can see where we have grown in the total, total revenues. Of course, you see the caterer go down completely, because I did want to include that, because that's what we were getting from the catering cut of the food and beverage, but wanted to include that. So if you look at the rental report on the screen, it's a bit different than what you have in front of you. I did want to show you what we utilize to try to, to make sure that we're making money on events and to establish rental rates. So what you have in front of you is an example of a wedding that was held at Meadow Brook this year, the summer. You can see where, what revenue was taken in, and then how we determine the expenditures. So personnel, we not only take the wages, but any pension, workers' comp, Medicare, we take that out as well. And then, and that's for everyone, from bartenders to our event manager, to anybody who helped set up or clean up the event. And then you go down to our other costs, like utilities. We do a percentage for that utility, you can see that highlighted. Depending on the type of event, we use a percentage, it's based on what's budgeted. So an event that has a full facility rental is going to use more utilities than somebody who just used the fireplace room. So that's where that scale goes, as well as overhead and indirect costs, janitorial supplies, bar items, advertising, printing, all that stuff, that's on a sliding scale as well, depending on how big the event is. And then we also take the cost out that we know, because if we sell alcohol, we know what we paid for that alcohol, so that's taken out as well. And as we get our total revenue for the program is on that last page of the rental report. So this one had nine hundred and sixty-eight dollar revenue for that. Again, we do, of course, the rentals with alcohol, we tend to make more of a profit than, we do make more of a profit than those without, but we service everyone, so. But I just kind of wanted to show you what all expenses and all revenues go into this, and that we are trying to do our due diligence to make sure that we are making money, but not pricing ourselves out for our facility. Speaking of expenditures, we had a few completed projects this year. One that I absolutely loved was the barn doors in the Laveras room. It, it just, it makes it look so much cleaner, I don't know if you've noticed those, or it just, again, instead of the old wicker dividers that were there, and you could see the orange floors with those, so that's really helped tremendously.
Have they cleaned up everything that's behind the barn doors?
Yeah, so there's some stuff that's going to take a lot, because there's some stuff that's already, like the old coffee machines, since it was an old server station, there's things that are attached in there that, again, we'll have to, we've really spent other time and money on things that people can see a little bit more. But yes, we have made sure that that is cleaned up, so anybody who does go back there, again, we keep some linens back there, we do keep extension cords, a few things like that, but that's just because we'd be using it for that room.
Yeah, I forget when I sent you the pictures of, from when it was a mess, but I know it was earlier this year, and I remember you and Amanda said that, get cleaned up.
Yes, yep. And I do believe some of that was from that rental, like some of the trays and things like that, that were back there, that we were able, you know, again, that we usually do check those out after each rental.
About the kitchen itself, I know we talked about that before, has the kitchen itself been cleaned professionally, or what's going on with that?
We do, so it has been, it gets cleaned. We deep clean it at least once a quarter, if not twice. Again, we're not necessarily cooking in there, but floors, every time there is an event, floors do get mopped, counters get, you know, wiped off, sanitized, so that the next caterer comes in. We have asked feedback from our caterers if there is anything that they would recommend, or, you know, that would be helpful to them, because we want to be a prime location for them and for, you know, them to refer us. We do need to get rid of, I don't know how many plates Meadow Brook had, I mean, I, there's been boxes and boxes that we've gotten rid of, and there's still boxes and boxes left, but we are slowly getting through that, those items.
This weekend is sweep Clayton clean.
Yeah, yes, exactly. With, like, the dishwasher and things, we did get rid of those old racks, and just trying to clean things up as we go.
There was a room by, like, the restrooms in the kitchen that were, like, full of old clothing and lockers, it looked, I know that was part of it, did that get cleaned up?
So the actual locker room, we have not gotten to yet, but the part where, you know, you can see if you go back there, that doesn't have a closed-off door that has been cleaned off. We still have the old, I don't know what it was used for, but it's like an old cart thing that is huge, but that's still sitting there, but there's, it's not a, it's not like an old treadmill that just stuff piles up on it, so we are trying to keep that tidy. Again, there's a lot, I, it is, I have not, I don't know how many years that stuff has collected. It, it, it is quite a much, so it is quite the undertaking, but we do find, especially in winter, excellent time to take on those projects. Speaking of upcoming projects, we have our flat roof and skylight replacement. We did speak with the contractor and hope that is, we are going to get that done in February, going to do it area by area, so we don't have to completely shut down operations, but very excited to get that done. Yeah, they said, yeah, or, yeah, it's, whatever they use is diff, is not necessarily where they have the persons sit there and seal it, it's a different method that, I was surprised, too, I thought we were going to have to wait till summer, and which, you know, again, that was going to be rough, but, yep. And then they're going to do all the outside work, so then it doesn't affect operations, and then come inside to do the lighting and the, yeah. We still have our expenditures with contractual services, we do rely heavily on that line item, as well as wages and benefits. We tend to, again, that seems to be a higher light item as well. We, just for contractual service to give examples from this year, we did add a cleaning service in addition to our staff members, so that every Monday and Thursday during the season, they come in and really give everything a nice, deep clean. As with the contractual services, we've had a lot of issues with our walk-in refrigerators and freezers this year, like condensers went out, fans went out, it, who knew, who knew? But those are now up and running, because those are very important to us, so those are the kinds of things that you don't necessarily think of when you're spending, you know, trying to budget out, but we did spend a good chunk on that this year, as well as the boiler, so. Banquet financials, we do expect this recovery rate to go up our, this year, because we have roughly twelve more rentals with bars this year. We do, again, December is a big month for us, as well as October, we've had a wedding almost, we've had two weddings almost every weekend, so, and weddings are bigger events for us, so they do bring in decent revenue. And of course, with financials, with the banquet side, it's a little bit more difficult because we require the rental wa, rate upfront. So, you know, we have people booking for 2025 weddings, but we're taking the money in 2023, so it does create a little bit, you know, of a skew of when we collect the money and what the current financials are. Before we move to the last slide, any questions on banquet? We will be advertising for the assistant event manager again. Unfortunately, Jenna, who is fabulous, had a baby and is dedicating that full-time, so we will be, you'll see that advertised here soon. Going on to our projects for 2024 through 2028, this is for all of Meadow Brook, but split up with golf, we do have finishing, paving the cart path, that has been on our list for quite a few years, but other things like fire systems, you know, kind of cut, push that down. Irrigation controls, so the ones that we're doing this year, there's a second and third phase of that, that eventually we will want to get done. No, the, that is the irrigation system, so, well, it's not necessarily the wells, it's the being able to control different parts of the course, so. I, that's, I've heard that, I've heard that, yeah. But it's more for the pump station rather than the well pump, so it's more if, yeah, I can have Mark explain it more. As far as the shared, oh goodness, so one thing for, to pave the drive, the main drive, the service drive, and the parking lots, this year, we got a quote for just over $240,000 just for paving. Of course, we're going to split this up, but unfortunately, we know costs of paving, they never go down. So that's going to be a big one that, it's going to be wonderful when we can finally get it done, but that's going to be a, a big chunk, once we see it. Also, I think which will help with Meadow Brook recognition and it being public as a new sign, so that is one thing that we are looking to do sooner rather than later, is a new entrance sign, because I think that sign has been hit by tornadoes and cars and who knows what else, but it's been, it's had its time. So we're looking to do that more as a gateway sign for Clayton as well, you know, to take away from that huge sign that's across the street from it, but we'll see. LED lighting project, that's another one, that one will end up saving us money, like it will, in a year, we'll be able to pay it back with the savings in electricity, so.
Just a thought, you know, you did mention the big sign, and I was going to bring this up, when I saw your note, it is Key Ads who owns the big Trotwood sign right there. I believe they're Clayton residents. Have we maybe thought about working with them to see if we could donate a little piece of that land for them to then donate a sign? I don't know if we would.
They were Clayton residents, they're, they, they lived on Old Salem Road.
The son still lives on Clinton Street, I believe.
I don't know, any of the boys still lived out here, and their mother moved, too, and...
Maria, I think, still lives, and, but anyways, I, I think it's something we could maybe think about.
We can definitely think about it, I didn't realize that they lived here in Clayton. I don't think we want another large sign like the other side, but I understand what you're saying, yes, maybe want a partner.
Something way scaled down, but if, it could be neat that also runs advertisements, but it's a Meadow Brook at Clayton sign, I think that could be really neat.
For the banquet facility, we are going to, I say to you, when we, when the roofing project was approved, some of that money, capital money from next year is going to go towards that roofing project. We'd like to replace the blinds for the ballroom in Laveras, those are a little, looking a little worse for the wear, so that will be nice, as well as the ballroom dividers, which we put a little paint on them, which helped tremendously, but they are, they need to be replaced. So we're looking to do that, as well as the doors to the balcony and patio, just like our front door, they were just like our front doors that we have replaced, we can't find parts for them because they don't make them anymore, so it would be nice to have closers and things like that on it. Dance floor is also on our list, that's one thing that we would charge for, so if somebody wanted it, we would charge to put that out, like most facilities, because right now, they have to rent it from a third party, so we could eventually get our money back with that. And then ongoing, we always have the carpet, you know, needs replaced after so many years, chairs need replaced, tables need replaced, so that is what we are looking at. And that is the end. Any questions?
Do you have any estimate on the recovery factor that you were talking about? Do you have any estimate as where we may land by the end of the year?
Um, total, between golf and banquet, or?
Just on the banquet aspect, you have seventy percent.
Sure, yeah, I would, I would say another five to eight percent, so right around seventy-seven or seventy-eight percent recovery rate.
Thanks.
Thank you, that was very good.
Thank you. That's good.
Well, we'll take a ten-minute break and get back to the regular meeting, or can we proceed?
We proceed, we advertise the meeting starting six thirty.
Yeah, let, let's take a break for five minutes and then come back to the meeting, okay?
If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Bachman.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman.
Here.
And Stevens.
I move to excuse Mr. Stevens.
Second.
We have a s- first, a motion by Mr. By Kenny and a second by Greg. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries unanimously. We we have a special presentation tonight. Chief Carver.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh tonight, uh we're actually gonna introduce two more of our newest uh full-time uh career individuals within the fire department. Uh I think it was two meetings ago I introduced someone. We're doing them while they're working on shift, so that's why we were wondering if they're gonna be here or not. They were kinda busy there for a while, so. Uh at first, I'm gonna call up Jonathan Wells. So Jonathan was hired uh by us in February of '23. Uh he joined the fire service in December of '21. Uh he uh had a previous career in a different field, uh but decided that the fire service, he wanted to give a hand to that, so he started that in December of '21. Uh he got his level two in EMT uh in that year and has been with us since February, obviously. He is on track to begin school for his paramedics in January, so he'll be going to paramedic school, uh which is 12 months long and it's not an easy course to get through. Uh so but he'll do a good job with that. Uh Mitch grew up in Huber Heights. Uh he currently resides in Troy uh with his wife Emily and their children. Uh through though he's new in the fire service, he has been, it's been a lifelong dream of his, uh and he's honored and excited to be a career firefighter with the city of Clayton. Uh and since he's been here for about six months now, uh his nickname is Mitch, so we always call him Mitch. So Mitch has done a great job for us. Uh he fits in well with the crews. Uh he does a good job in the community, uh with our with our public relations and our our citizens on calls. He jumps in, he's a hard worker. Uh he's been a joy to have on shift. Uh and like I said, he's just a great addition to our staff and we're glad to have Mitch and uh I hope he's here for a very long time. So congratulations, Mitch. Go ahead and shake their hands on the way around. Our next newest member is Joel Smith. Joel's only been with us for about a month, so he he is fairly new. When we swore him in, that was actually his first day. So haha, so uh it's typically we've gone from our swearing ends have gone, they've been here anywhere from a year to his first day. So it just depends on when we can get it in, but uh Joel was hired into the collaborative in uh December of '22, uh and this is his first full-time job in the fire service with Clayton. Uh he uh orig- he is originally from Clayton and he graduated from Northmont High School in 2020. Uh he acquired his his uh EMT and his level-two card at Sinclair Community College, uh and he plans on going into the paramedics here uh here within the next year. Uh he is also a part of uh Union and Inglewood. Obviously, he works there as well. Uh he's only been here a month, uh but you know, again, Joel is very motivated. Uh he works really hard in the firehouse. He's always out trying to learn something. Uh he is new to fire service, but he's always out there trying to learn. That's something we like to see from our younger, newer employees, uh that they're out there working hard and just learning everything they can versus, you know, just sitting back and watching other people do things. It's it's refreshing to see young people do that. Uh and he's just so, like I said, energetic and and wanting to learn. Uh he's on a shift that is our training shift, so they're out trying all different kinds of things, uh watching videos on fires and learning things and then teaching that to the to the rest of the department. So he's involved in that. Uh so he's got a knack for that and you know, he's just, like I said, he's a joy to have around. And one of the things he actually gave me, cuz I make the guys right there on bio, so. Uh but one and I shared this that is swearing. He also wanted to know that he is my favorite new hire within the collaborative. He wanted to make sure I knew that, so. Uh but we're we're glad to have Joel. Uh I think he'll be, he is a great addition. I think he'll do well for our community and our and our fire department. So we welcome Joel Smith aboard. Nice to have you, Joel.
Thanks, sir.
Kate Plyman, you can take care of that. He doesn't do that with the expensive stuff, I swear. And actually, I think that's that's all of our swearing or our introductions for the year, so uh we shouldn't have any more, hopefully. Uh we are back to uh fully staffed within the fire department, uh so that's a good good thing. And uh the months ahead, we've looked at schedules and they look much better than they had before, so. Uh hopefully, we don't have to do this again, but if we do, we will be here, but we thank you for your patience and your continued support.
Brian, I have a question. Um the first gentleman, you said was going to EMT school, which takes.
Paramedic.
Paramedic school, which takes a year.
Yes.
Where is that school?
So there is multiple different ones. He's gonna take his, I believe, at Edison State, which is up in Myhman County. Yeah. Uh so you have a couple different options. You have Clark State, you have Sinclair, you have Edison. And most of them, they just pick what's works best for their work schedule. Some some programs only have like a certain day you can go. Other programs have you can go this day or this day, so it works out better for their schedules. None of them are, none of them are cheaper than the others. They're all right around $12,000.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we will have the council meetings of uh October 5th and night of 2023.
We have the council meeting minutes of October 5th, 2023 before you.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We we have a motion by Mr. By Kenny and a second by Tina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh we have old business tonight. We have an ordinance, the second reading of an ordinance. If you would read the ordinance, clerk, we would appreciate it.
Mr. Gorman, if I could interject just for a quick minute, since we're having the second reading on that ordinance, we need to actually move the visitor's comments before that ordinance vote. It could rain, so that's why we need to move the visitor comments up before that ordinance.
Move to amend the agenda to move visitor's comments before the uh first ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion by Brendan and a second by Greg. Um I didn't hear the motion. What was it to do? To amend the agenda. I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So then we just need to request visitor comments at this point?
Yeah.
Just need to request visitor comments at this point?
Are there any comments on changing the agenda?
No, I think Martina means from the.
Oh, from the audience. Oh, okay. I'm confused here. Um would anyone in the audience like to speak? Yes, sir. Your your name and address, please?
Joe Plummer, 11415 Old Mill Road. I don't know if she can answer, but I was just kinda curious. What's the percentage of golfers from Clayton? I know when you go to play, you ask, you get a discount if you live in Clayton.
I would have to pull the exact numbers on that one to let you know, but I certainly can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other visitors that like? Yes, ma'am.
Rose Plummer, 11415 Old Mill Road. So um sorry, I missed the first slide in the presentation cuz I think we went out to the golf course, thinking maybe the meeting was there. Um so just a question on the recovery rate for the operation. So I think you were at 96% through September. So what do you expect that to finish at for the year? Because there'll still be, you know, grounds work that needs to take place and probably not nearly as many rounds of golf. So I'm just curious if you had a projection on that.
Um just so it's on the record.
Sure.
Unfortunately, I don't necessarily have a projection, um because we also do have the simulator rates and or simulator goes into that as well.
Okay.
You are correct, though, that we do still have full-time staff members that we pay. We still have golf course maintenance that still takes place. Um we are ahead of where we were last year at this time, um so I do foresee it being better than last year at 77%, but unfortunately, I I I can't, I yeah.
And then um being um so as far as subsidizing the golf course, is that, I mean, have we already sent money to that fund through the year or is so has there been like a a contribution made? Then will there be a settle-up at the end of the year or how does that work?
Every year, there are transfers from the general fund to the golf course. Um I think last year it was two around the two $200,000 um was for this year as well, and that money is just spent through that fund throughout the year.
Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think in regard to your first question, at this time of year, the weather is very dependent upon golf.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I mean, and only one person knows knows what the weather's gonna be from now till December 20 or 31st, and he's not with us tonight, so. Any other visitors that would like to speak? Earl, you can speak later. Okay, for the ordinance now? All right, if the clerk would read ordinance, please.
Ordinance O, 102323, and ordinance approving amendments to the city's personnel practices manual at Article 6 and further adding a new Article 18 and a new Article 33, all as delineated in the attached appended appended attachment A.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Kenny, a second by Tina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
Mayor.
That's our only ordinance of the night. We have one resolution.
Mr. Gorman, we need a motion and a vote to untable that since it was tabled at the last meeting.
I'll move to take it off. I'll move to untable.
I'll second.
Hey, but we have a motion by Kenny and a second by Tina to untable the resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Now that we'll read the resolution.
Yes.
Before we do that, Mr. Gorman, I'm sorry. Um at the last council meeting, um council had requested that we increase the number of members of the Parks Commission or Parks Advisory Commission from um the nine that we currently have to 15. Administratively, 15 people is a very hard board to manage, um and I requested that council give me time to talk to our development director, who actually chair, not chairs, but administratively runs the um the board, and then also give him an opportunity to talk to the Parks Board directly to see if they're interested um in having 15 people on that board. Um I had an opportunity to do that and they uh made the decision and are making the recommendation to council that it maintain a nine-member board rather than 15. So that is why that is still on the agenda and not legislation to change it from nine to 15. If that's what council wants to do, that's what we'll still do. But I am recommending that we maintain nine and the Parks Commission is also main recommending that we maintain nine. So before you tonight, you have a resolution appointing someone. Um if you want to leave that on the table until the next meeting when everyone is here and you can have an opportunity to discuss, because if we did have four members of the community who were interested in that one position, we can do that. And the members who are not appointed to that board, we can keep in a folder for other opportunities as they arise.
Well, we have four uh applications. Does someone wanna make a nomination? I mean, if you read them, uh I I think the uh one person stands out quite a bit, but um if we wanna put it off another meeting, we can do that.
Can we put it off another meeting for Mike and make, okay, make the motion to put it off for another meeting? Table it.
I'll second. I'll second.
We have a motion by Tina and a second by Brendan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The the resolution is is tabled until the next meeting. We have no new business this evening and we will go to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few items for you this evening. One, I want to remind everyone that we have a work session. Um the next meeting, we will discuss the charter commission recommendations and um at the meeting after that, um on November 16th, if council wishes, it will bring legislation certifying those to the ballot for the March election. Um in city news and events, um I'll go over a couple and then I'll turn it over to Earl. Uh we have Fall Sweep Clayton Clean Saturday, October 21st, so it's this coming Saturday from 8:00 AM to noon over on Woolery Lane. Um the bins do fill up quickly, so the earlier you get there, the better. Um and then we have costumes and carvings coming up on Sunday, October 29th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at Meadowbrook at Clayton. It's one of my favorite events during the year. It's a lot of fun. And Earl, if you'd like to talk about any other events that we're having at the city?
Earl Harmon, 6420 Lavon Court. Uh we are going to open our handicap park on the 28th. Uh ribbon cutting will be done at 2:00. I'd like to see everybody there cuz it's a beautiful park. Uh Jack and his crew has really done a great job on this, getting all this equipment in and uh everything's gonna be done except for the sign, the only thing we gotta have left to do. But uh it looks good. I walked it yesterday. I walked it, uh watched them uh seed the ground around it. Uh it's just, it's just spectacular, this little park that we've got.
Which park is it again? Can you tell people?
This is Northview Park and it is a handicap park. Uh you can get into the castle and you can go walk your wheelchair all the way around the castle and out, and you can get on a swing right outside of it, and uh it's just a-okay. It is just beautiful. And you got the uh the shelter house right next to it, so if you wanna have a picnic, you got a handicap child that likes to to swing on the swings, you can have a little picnic there. We got a grill there and everything else. Uh everything we have. Uh the only thing that we're still lacking is we're sta- lacking the cameras to go in the park. All parks will have cameras in them. Uh we put in a lot of, I shouldn't say we, you put a lot of money into these parks, uh and we don't want them destroyed. So I was talking to to Randy and Randy says that cameras will be in all parks. that cameras will be in all parks. And they're hooked up right to the police department so they can sit and watch what's happening in the parks. I think it's the greatest thing that happened. So I'm very pleased with that. Pumpkin patch, come on, have fun. We put pumpkins out. We have to cover the tables with plastic, put the pumpkins out there and let the kids and their dads and moms carve that pumpkin. When it's all done, my, my lady, or my coworkers will clean up the park, clean up all the tables. They can take their pumpkins home. Costume, cost, is a costume thing that you sit and watch and try to figure out who's got the best costume. But it's a great event for kids and their parents. So the parents can work right with their child, and it, it just turns out to be a great event. So that's what's coming up. And then in December, of course, is our breakfast with Santa. I'll talk about it later. Any questions? Anything anybody wants to ask me about, or?
Yeah, Earl, you, you might give the people where the park is that you were speaking about.
Okay.
It's at the end of Lavon Court, but how do you get to Lavon Court, Earl?
You come, you come down Willow Creek, all the way to the bottom of the hill. It dead ends into Lavon. Lavon goes to the right. It's right at the end of the street. There is four handicap slots, and there's about five or six extra slots in there to park your cars and things like that. You can get on the pathway and go all the way over in your wheelchair, all the way across to get onto the swing sets and everything else. We're hoping to have the Northmont Community School. We'll bring people down or tell them about it and show them the pictures. And they can come down and they can pull in and go right in and have fun swinging. And that, it's a little late in the year, but it's still, it's there and it's for the community. And the community will well use it before long. Your dog path is through there. You can walk your dog while your child's swinging. And it's just, it's just a part of Clayton that is really, really, all of these parks are really getting to be very, very good for Clayton and for sales of houses around Clayton and everything else for the community. It's just, it just knocks your socks off. So anyhow, any questions? I'll-
Yeah, Earl, in the press release that we received, I believe it asked the press to, to park on the streets.
Right.
And if you're not in need of a handicap parking lot, it might be better if citizens parked on the street too, if they can walk that far.
Right, yeah. Because it's, it's a short street and there's, I'd say maybe 15 parking slots on the street, and then the rest of them are inside. But come and have fun. 2:00, we're going to cut the ribbon. And hopefully have a lot of people there to look this park over and walk this park. Just another fabulous thing that Clayton is doing. Thank you.
I have good news for you, Earl. The cameras are working in Northview now. They're already up.
Oh, they, okay. I didn't know that, because Randy hadn't told me yet. So thanks. That's great. Because we've already had some, how shall I say, literature put on the back of a swing that's not appropriate, and it's cleaned off now. So now if it happens again, we might be able to have the young man do some community service for a while. So, but that's all a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl.
I'd like to ask Chief Garver to come up and talk to council about the HAZ system.
Okay, I got a short video to show you, but just to explain the HAZ system and for the community to see it. But just a real quick thing. The HAZ system is basically just an emergency notification system for drivers who are approaching emergency vehicles or at an accident scene. And it alerts you through your, either your phone or your display in your vehicle. So it's one of the, it's a safety thing. And I'll let the, I'll let the video play here in a second. But it reduces crashes with emergency vehicles by about 90%. So it's something that we've been looking at. And I'll talk about pricing. I'll talk about the collaborative, how we're doing that, and some other advantages to it. So Steve, if you want to throw that up on the two screens for us and. And yes, the cameras did get finally installed today. I'll do the final programming of them by the end of the week so we can get that done.
Roads are dangerous, especially for the people that work on them. Collisions are a leading cause of injury and death for emergency responders, work zone operators, and other workers on the road. When drivers don't move over because of distractions, weather conditions-
This is the same video that I sent out to council a few weeks ago.
Roads are dangerous, especially for the people that work on them. Collisions are a leading cause of injury and death for emergency responders, work zone operators, and other workers on the road. When drivers don't move over because of distractions, weather conditions, or other factors.
I can explain it just as well. So it's, it is the video you guys got. And we'll put it on the website too. So if someone wants to look at it when we, when we deploy it. So basically, we were looking for something. We're always looking for safety things on vehicles. How we can protect our people when they're out on scenes, when we're coming up to intersections or what have you. And this system is out. There are, there are a couple of communities around us already using it. So we, we looked at it, and there's, just when we see how it works and the advantages we have, like I said, when it reduces crashes into apparatus and hurting firefighters and police officers by 90%, it really caught our attention. So Trotwood was already using it. So we looked how they were using it, how effective it was, and it's been very effective for them. And we are able to do, again, collaboratively, we are now joining up with Trotwood, Inglewood, Union, Clayton, doing this together. And we're receiving a 20% discount by doing it that way. It's going to cost the, the department about $1,900 a year. So it's not a big cost. It goes in every single one of our pieces of apparatus. And as we are driving, as soon as you activate your emergency lights, it actually sends out a signal to Waze, Apple phone, and any invitation you have on your vehicle that's 2018 and newer from all the Chrysler family. That's what manufacturer they have done currently. There are three other major ones they're looking at. Google Maps is involved in this as well in the future. So they're expanding it. So basically, again, when you watch your video that we sent you, if you're using Waze on the way to your trip, and you're pulling up on an emergency scene about a minute away, you're going to get alerted that there's an emergency scene. Slow down, move over. If a vehicle, if we're responding emergency and you're coming at the vehicle and we're driving, same thing's going to happen. Emergency vehicle approaching, get over, slow down. It actually comes through your phone, through your, through your car to alert you. The other nice feature about it, obviously, we have a, a dashboard that we can control. If there's a road closure in the city of Clayton, we can actually add that road closure to this system, that we closed the road for a certain reason. And it'll actually alert drivers of the road closure when they're using mapping and software for their vehicles or for their phone. The other thing it does, it gives us some GPS tracking of our apparatus. From time to time, we get complaints, you know, they get scared because the vehicles come up on them, oh, they're going so fast, or they didn't have their ER lights on, what have you. The system tells us that. What were they doing when they approached this intersection? How fast were they going? Were they on their brake? Were they on accelerator? Were their lights on? Those type of things. So it does give us ability to track apparatus. And not that we have problems with our people driving, but we do get complaints from time to time, and we can actually go look at. So, but it also just gives us a, a track. If we ever have an accident with a vehicle, there's actually breadcrumbs. There's, there's data that we can pull to see where our crew's doing, what they should have or not. So it's just an all-around good thing, and the expense is not, you know, that high. We think it's a good addition to safety and just the notifications of public when we're on emergency vehicles, or emergency scenes. We're good? Any questions from council?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
That's all I have for you this evening, unless you have questions for me.
Then we'll go to visitors' comments. Anybody care to comment that hasn't been up already? Listener. Okay. Then we will move to council comments. We'll start with Brendan.
Nothing to add, Mr. Mayor. I-
Kenny?
I wanted to say happy belated birthday to Mr. Harlem. I hope you had a great time with the family. I texted Tina and said, your party looked like a fun time. I know that we have Halloween coming up on October 31st. I had a text message earlier today. And I know that the city has made social media posts with the time of 6:00 to 8:00 on the 31st of October, actual Halloween. I didn't realize that TIP City and other cities did theirs earlier. So.
Some do. A while ago, the mayors and managers all got together and made the decision to do it on the 31st. If the people up north deviate, I don't know what they're doing. But down here, we do it all on the same day.
Yeah. So thank you for that. Thank you for putting that information out. I know that my son is looking forward, Clayton at least, is looking forward to the costumes and carvings. And then Esther Price is doing their fall event, their first annual fall event on the 28th, that Saturday. I believe it starts at 11:00. So that's all I have. I guess I would add, my son Clayton is turning three on October 26th. So happy third birthday, buddy.
Greg?
I'll pass for this evening.
Tina?
So bear with me. Octo, there is, in the Northmont area, Chamber of Commerce is having a town hall. It says, join your fellow community members to hear from local candidates about their views and why they are running to local offices, as well as hear about local issues on the ballots. It says, come with your questions for your candidates. So it's going to be at Meadowbrook at 6:30. Doors open at 6:00. So we'd like to see all residents to come out to learn about your candidates in the Northmont area. That's it.
Dennis?
Oh, usually I try to be pretty lighthearted about some things, but I would, I would feel like I would be remiss if I didn't say something about what's happening over in the Mideast right now, Middle East. I know I've mentioned this before, but I lost my entire family in Auschwitz. And it struck me today that, that what we are seeing in this world is just really hateful stuff. And that's a silly way to describe it. But today, I got a call from a United States attorney who, out of the blue, just says, and, and we go head-to-head all the time, you know, in, in what I do. And he said, they wanted to let you know and Judge Rice know that I'm thinking of you and I'm praying for you at this time. That's when it struck home to me what, how dangerous our times are. Because to me, it's, it's kind of surreal to think that, that we could have thousands of people killed for no really legitimate reason. And, and I know I'm getting old, and my words don't mean much anymore. But I, I really wish that there were more people in this world that could realize that the answer isn't violence. The answer isn't killing people you don't agree with, or whose religions you may not practice, or who you, who you just don't like because of decisions they may have made. It's easy to do when you look at them as, as others or as monsters, but they're not. They're human beings, just like my family was. And they didn't deserve what they got. I didn't deserve, when I was a kid, to ask my dad when we were going to have a family reunion on his side, and to be told that we have no family. And I don't know why I'm saying this, other than the fact that I think I had to say something tonight to recognize I'm not asking for a resolution. That's, really, it's meaningless. I mean, Clayton Council's resolution isn't going to stop a war. But I'm asking everybody who hears this to maybe think before you say something stupid, buddy, or, or even promote other people to do it. I know now I sound like I did in 1975 when we were protesting Vietnam and everything. But I, I'm not a peacenik as much as I am just blabbering on here about hoping that we all can just treat each other right and with respect and dignity. And you do that, and you're not going to be killing each other. I guess that's all I have. Thanks for letting me ramble.
Thank you, Dennis. That means it's mayor's turn, and, and I'm the mayor for tonight only. Let, let's hope that then that Mike gets back safely anyway. All I would, Kenny mentioned that, that Halloween is coming up. And at the Halloween, that we have to be careful on the roads. The ghosts and goblins don't always pay attention. And they're not always dressed in bright colors either. You have to look and slow down, and particularly in the Platts. As Kenny said, that some of the other communities are having trick-or-treat on different nights, which will bring some of the older people to Clayton for trick-or-treat again on the second time or third time that year. But just be careful on the streets and, and everybody will be safe. I'm not able to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Is there something we can do about that, Martina?
I'll second.
I think I heard Kenny make a motion.
He made a motion.
Kenny made a motion. Do we have a second? Dennis second it. All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.